President.
Here. Here.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley. Mayor Duper.
President.
We have a call, thank you.
Okay, we'll start with the invocation and pledge by Mayor Pro Tempore Daley. I don't know how we're gonna stand.
Oh, it's been a long.
Okay. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance to our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under our God, with liberty, justice, and I got it backwards. You need to say a prayer now. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings that you provide us with the opportunity that we have to live in this free country and in this beautiful community. We pray for our country and for the world with the severe challenges that we're dealing with. That you will give each of us the courage and strength and productivity to work our way through the challenges. And we pray for our community that we will hang together and be focused on our mission.
Okay, for the city manager, are there any items to be added or deleted? We will deal with conflicts if they arise. And our first item is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion or would you like to pull anything for discussion?
Specifically for Councilman Leonard, I do have one. I'd like to pull item two, minutes of the March seventeen meeting, actually April fourteen meeting.
Any other ones? Do you want to just move the rest of the calendar?
No, that's, I think that's the only one. I had questions, but as I read through it, I figured out the answers. Actually, I thought Mayor Duper would pick this one up, but on page three, one, two, third paragraph down. If you read the bold section, it says, motion by Leonard and seconded by Jen Doll to close nominations and instruct the city clerk to cast unanimous ballot for Ron Daley as mayor pro tempore. The city clerk called the role and Ron Daley was selected unanimously as mayor. So I want credit and I want the salary for.
I think he wants to trade seats with you.
Let's do it.
Okay, I would have done this privately with you, Barbara, but it was just too priceless, so.
Just save it.
Okay, we've dispensed with the minutes with the correction. Any other items we'd like to pull?
It repeats it somewhere else, too. It's two times I see it.
John, you can't tell you're pulling an item from the consent calendar.
I'm just following up on you. It's in the middle of the next page. It says the same thing. City clerk called the role and Ron Daley. Probably had a mask on and was blowing her.
I think we know who Barbara was voting for.
Yeah.
Barbara, I can't hear you through my. Is anybody else? There you go. There you go.
All right, we're still looking for a motion or do you want to pull?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll move it.
Okay, motion by Dr. Leonard. And I will support it with compliments to Diana because the treasurer's report and demands register look pristine as usual. The numbers don't don't set me off track quite as readily as they used to. I'm accustomed to them.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second by Dr. Daley. Any objections?
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, all votes when we're teleconferencing need to be by roll call.
That's right. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Jendal.
Aye.
Councilman Leonard.
Aye.
Councilman Rixby.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley.
Aye.
And Mayor Duper.
Aye.
Thank you. It passes unanimously.
Okay, moving on to old business. We don't have anything listed. Nothing listed under new business. Reports of council. Anything that you all would like to discuss?
So yeah, something I would like to bring up. So yesterday we had the at the Loma University, at the academy. So I want to thank everyone that was present there. I know it took collaboration.
Can you speak a little? Barbara, can you speak a little bit more slowly? I'm having a hard time. There's a delay.
Okay. Would like to thank everyone for all the collaborations that we have. When I went there, the staff was very very attentive to the needs of the different residents that were coming. One thing I did ask them is how many residents were served, lived in Loma Linda and how many from rest of the county? By the time I had gone there, there were about one hundred and eighty residents that had been tested for COVID nineteen. And they had expected a total of three hundred and sixty-seven individuals that are registered for it. So I think it was a success, especially for the first time that the city's doing it. Just shows, you know, when we do come together, we can really pull something off compared to some other places where I heard we had issues. So really, I'd like to call the sheriff's department, the academy, the medical center, and the fire department as well.
Awesome. I'll just let you guys know a couple of things that I've been involved in related to some of this. There's a Southern California Regional Mayor's Group that started out based out of Costa Mesa is where it started, but our own Fontana Mayor, up and then Warren was the one who's been recruiting a bunch of San Bernardino County mayors. And we've been eating, talking about plans and discussion on how we can work with the state government to try to reopen businesses and get our economy moving. I've also been sitting on phone calls, which I'm sure some of you have too, with the county supervisors and other electeds. Weekly phone calls where they're talking about the progress and what's going on with the county. As you know, the county lifted all of their general orders on Friday. That was a very specific action that they did so that there would not be conflict between us and the state and that as future concerns arise, they can be directed towards the state. So the county, because the mask order was a county order that was lifted, although the county did recommend that residents continue to wear them, but it's no longer a requirement in the county. Not much else to report. I'm just sitting in on those meetings and listening. Jarb, our city manager. Oh, that's right. We need oral reports. We can move back to that in a second. Okay, anything else from the council?
Yeah, I can't remember the council bill number, but we're we've, we paid for the California Redlands Board of our intersection rebuild.
Yes.
Because Redlands didn't have any money.
No, it didn't design like to.
Oh, okay. And now we're gonna, we're going to build out down to Orange Street.
Yes.
When is that? When are we anticipating the timetable is?
I'm looking at the quieter right away, probably January, February.
Okay.
The plan, the plan's being designed right now and decided right away. What you just do tonight is some money to get a property appraised. We have to reimburse.
So there's two packages that we need to purchase in order to facilitate.
We have to purchase right away, couple of properties for widely. Yes.
Okay. Do we anticipate trouble with that?
No. Relocate power pole installs that as a long lead items relocate gas.
And, and remind me where Orange Street is, where it crosses California. Is that down by the Indonesian Church or?
South for the south.
South.
Yes, yes, it's by the park.
And, and we're paying part of it, but the developments in area D are also paying part, right?
They are in area D, it paid by the side and part of traffic signal at California Orange.
Okay. And what's the anticipated termination date? Completion date?
I have budget for next fiscal year, so I, I would like to get street widened from Orange all the way to property pass, let me see, church and then hopefully get it done by, by May, by next year.
Okay. So the polls get moved after the streets widen?
No, sir. It'd be done first.
That's what I thought.
Yes. So that's why there's a lot of work had to be done before we widen the street.
Yeah.
First, acquire it right away. Second, relocate the utilities. Third is put in a storm rain pipe.
Yeah.
Now, once to a property, all we need is just getting it right away for installing the storm rain.
Okay.
But they're not gonna give us, buy the whole property to widen the street because it's
Yeah, yeah.
The street we live in room, they said they're not gonna sell it.
Yeah, yeah.
Take so what we're gonna do is we should widen the street and follow back to South Park Avenue and then run back at the intersection. My money's available. That SBCDA already approved the MS.
I read it. I just don't remember all the numbers. Yeah, okay.
And the local mass come from.
So it'll be a project for another year and a half. Here's what I'm ultimately getting to is when we were doing a lot of other development, particularly on Mountain View, and people were getting rerouted and discovered we actually have orange groves here as well in the process. Is this gonna be a little bit smoother than that? In other words, Mountain View will continue to be open?
Yes, yes, yes.
Because I got a lot of phone calls on that. People were wandering down to New Jersey and everywhere. Okay. Good.
Ben, real quick, you mentioned Redlands and there's an article on the Sun's website this afternoon. I just read it before I came down here. They're looking at a fifteen point seven million dollar budget deficit in the city of Redlands. The proposal currently right now amongst other city employees is to eliminate thirty-one non sworn from the police department and five sworn officer positions from the police department in Redlands.
Wow.
Yeah, so we had our budget meeting last week, our pre-budget workshop. And obviously, we're facing a deficit as well, but we're nowhere near that because of the many years of prepaying by not only our former mayor and our council and our city manager, but just everybody here in town. We're, I don't, I'm not, this isn't to gloat because obviously those are serious problems and they'll affect us as well. But it illustrates what we're really gonna have to deal with post COVID. So one of the discussions with this mayor's group is trying to figure out how we start educating the public on potentially what is coming and not, not in a scary type of way, but in the article, it alludes to three hundred and forty people wrote letters mostly because they were upset with the fact that Redlands was talking about cutting the library service. And what people have to understand is there is not unlimited money. And, and so I feel very privileged and lucky enough to be here with you all and be part of this. And I think we've done a good job here in Loma Linda, but I do feel sorry for some of the other communities. At the end of this, the virus, when the virus is over, the rest of this will live on for quite a while, so.
It's a lot of tough decisions that we all had to make and as soon as we, we did, you know, as soon as we have done it in the past. That's why we do a lot better than a city right now, so.
I think we appoint John Leonard as the city of Loma Linda's version of Tony Fauci and then just turn it all over to him to communicate. I can't hear you with your mask on. Okay, often this is part of what we were talking about before, though, in terms of budgets and local cities in Loma Linda. This is exactly what we were talking about.
There's some reference in there too about their pension obligations too. So it's a very interesting article if you get a chance to read it.
What, what paper?
The Sun.
Okay.
Which is the same as the fax and all those papers now.
Mayor, since we are going back to item.
Public comment.
Public comments. After that, are we able to revisit the consent calendar for number nine?
Well, we already passed the consent calendar, but we could go back to number nine if you'd like to.
Thank you.
Let's, let's handle the public participation section. Do we have any comments?
If you have any comments at this time and you're connected through a telephone, please press star nine or use the chat function built into Zoom on PC, desktop or iPhone. Or you can use the raise hand function built into the Zoom app.
Okay, doesn't look like we have any comments tonight. Let's go back to number nine from the consent count.
Thank you. So my question lies in this, whereas for council bill art twenty twenty. Sorry, the landscape maintenance district, art twenty twenty thirteen.
Now, you street light.
Yeah, I'm at the last region district. The preliminary.
Number, number eight.
Number eight.
Eight, okay. Okay.
So my question is for the fifth, whereas the current assessment rate is adequate to maintain the current facility. Page fourteen of the booklet, we're seeing that there are certain districts who direct administrative costs are above the balance to levy rate. So would that not make this inaccurate statement or am I?
You're accurate. Is asking about the revenue differences between the older landscape maintenance districts and the current, because they didn't have the public increases or whatever you refer those to, but.
Like, like I explained to you earlier, the, the first fifty districts doesn't have cost escalation. So the way we assess it is we assess it to the maximum that they allow for, for the first fifty districts.
Yeah, so I understand that. My question is, it says the current assessment rate is adequate to maintain the current facility, but we are pulling from the general fund.
Right.
So the current assessment rate would not be adequate, right? Because we have to pull a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the general fund.
Right. But if you look on, in here, they also say that this, this some area did have a common goods for the, for the.
So the question that often comes up is, is there anything we can do about that? And my understanding is that has to go to a vote of the residents in those districts. And without them voting to approve the increase, it kind of puts us.
On page eleven.
Page eleven, thank you.
Okay. On page eleven, just on the top of item D, the last two lines say, the portion of the total landscape maintenance district and services costs that are associated with general benefit. You see that? With general benefit will not be assessed to the parcel in the district, but it will be paid from other city fund. So for example, the landscape along Mountain View, Mars, and part of Beaumont that have, and Barton Road have benefit to other people, other than the people that live within that subdivision. So therefore, a part of the expenditure can come from general fund.
Yes, so the current assessment rate would not be adequate to maintain the current facility.
Your mask down just for a moment while I, yeah. Yes.
Great. So my question is, because we're pulling from the general fund, whatever reason it's a general like good, but because of the fact that we're pulling from the general fund would mean that the current assessment rate, and I understand that we can't increase it without voter approval, but the current assessment rate would not be adequate to maintain the current facility.
Correct.
So this should be taken out of the resolution. Because you said it's correct, right? Where the current assessment rate is not adequate? So does that mean the statement?
So the thing is, you have to open this item back up. Help me see attorney. We already have approved this and now. Yeah, so, so.
Well, we have to wait, go through the process.
So so the challenges to the wording in the council bill that was approved.
We.
Hold on, let me scroll fast. The reason is balancing inadequate because we supplemented with the general fund.
But that's what you're objecting to.
No, so I understand that we're getting it from the general fund, but that's my whole point. If we have to pull it from the general fund.
Right.
The current assessment rate, which is in our booklet, is not adequate to maintain the current facility because we're ending up, if it was adequate, we wouldn't have to touch the general fund, but we are. So that means that the current assessment rate is not adequate.
I see. He's objecting to the wording.
Okay.
Would you? Is your motion to?
I think we need Rich to weigh in on process here before we.
I apologize. I was, I'm having some technical difficulties trying to bring up those pages of the resolution. I've got Zoom open. For some reason, it won't let me go back to that other screen at the moment, but I, I think, if I understood what Jarb was saying, the funds are adequate with the contribution from the general fund. And that covers both the special benefit.
Can you hear us, Rich?
Yes, Rich, that's what Jarb is saying. Councilman Jendal is, is saying that it's not an accurate statement because.
I'm thinking that's accurate, but I'm thinking that the fact that we have to pull from the general fund makes what's written in the resolution incorrect.
I completely agree with what you're saying.
Right.
I'm just saying that way it's written in here is incorrect, but it's saying that the current assessment rate, which is what we're charging residents, is enough to cover all the facilities that we need.
So my, my question, see the attorney, is how are we going back to the resolution? I mean, I'm happy to do it, but.
Okay, from a procedural standpoint, the item was part of the consent calendar that was already voted on and approved. If a member of the council wishes to reopen or reconsider the vote on the consent counter, you may do so with a motion to reconsider the approval of the consent counter and to amend item nine's resolution to include the additional information that Councilman Jendal's requesting.
Are you, are you asking for maybe like a footnote or something to put in there?
Let's go through the procedure. So I would like to move to revisit the consent on order section eight, be the preliminary approving of the annual report.
Okay, so I have a emotion. Do I have a second?
I'm trying to understand. I think, am I on or not? Because it keeps telling me. Host is muting me, it says. Yeah, because we have, we have the microphones on our headsets and then also the ones in front of us. That's why. The point of the motion is to redefine the language in, in the council bill?
So the point of current, of the current motion is just so we can discuss it. As a city attorney.
I, I can't hear you at all.
The point of the current, current motion is to discuss this item, not that we're changing anything, but just so we can discuss it using the proper procedure.
Okay, I'm always for procedure.
Well, the, the motion could be to reconsider the approval of consent counter item number, I'm sorry, was it eight or nine, the landscape?
Eight B.
Eight B. To reconsider the approval of item eight B. And then if that motion passes, there could be a motion for approval with some additional language or modification. So that would be the second motion. First would be to reconsider eight B.
Is that your motion?
Yes, to reconsiderate the, no changes yet.
Do we have a second?
Our purposes of discussion, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so then now it requires a vote. Madam Clerk.
Hi. Councilman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilman Rixby.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley.
Yes.
Mayor Duper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now what's the next motion?
Great. So before we get to that motion, are we allowed to discuss?
I, I think you have to make the motion so then we can discuss it.
So I would move that on eight, council bill. R dash twenty twenty dash thirteen. We strike out current assessment rate is adequate to maintain.
Microphone, give him a microphone.
Your microphone's not on. Has to be on the computer. I heard you, but hear but not understand. Give me a page number as you're going.
There's no page number on this, but if you go to page number forty forty-three and then five pages after is the resolution.
Here.
I'm still not.
I'm not, I'm not familiar either.
Go to page forty-three and then what?
Forty, so if you're on page forty-three, you're gonna scroll the next page.
I'm in the wrong one. Maybe in the wrong book.
Three pages after.
I'm in the wrong book.
There's no.
That's my. Blank resolution number up at the top.
Okay, so where on this page are we talking about?
Where at the end. Yes.
So the third, fifth line from the bottom.
Where, yeah, third one from the bottom.
So your question has to do with what, how do you define current assessment rate?
No, so my issue with this one is. No, so my issue with this one is.
Is the word adequate?
Yes, so we have the current assessment rate and I agree that we have an assessment rate. My issue is that if the assessment rate was adequate, we would not be pulling from the general fund, but we are pulling a hundred and, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the general fund. So that means that the current assessment rate would not be adequate.
Do you have a proposed language change for that?
So there's two options, either we can strike it out completely or we can change it to, whereas the current assessment rate is not adequate, add that not.
Would you say the current assessment rate is inadequate, but with supplement from the general fund?
Or it could be whereas the current assessment rate and supplementation from the general fund is adequate to maintain the current facilities.
However you'd like to word it.
So I will make that motion, so where, I move to change the fourth, whereas to be, whereas the current assessment rate along with supplementation from the general fund is adequate to maintain the current facility.
Okay, I can support that. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilman Gendal.
Hi.
Councilman Leonard.
Hi.
Councilman Rixby.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley.
Hi.
Mayor Duper.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Okay, it didn't quite measure up to figuring out we had the wrong mayor identified, but it was a good move. A good start. Okay, any reports of officers?
You guys realize the minutes rule, so if that passed, he would have been the mayor.
And I had opened my big mouth.
You shouldn't have said anything.
Nothing from staff? Okay, we're gonna move to adjourn the city council meeting, however, we're gonna do so in special memory to a couple of people. First is retired fire chief for Fireman Don Bender. He was a paid call captain, it says, from nineteen sixty-two to ninety-eight. And a member of the Traffic Advisory Committee, most recently, he passed away on May third in Wyoming near his son, Jeff, who was our most recent fire chief before anyway. Don was a institution here in Loma Linda and well-known and I don't know why I always considered him a chief. I thought maybe he was a battalion chief or something, but he sure acted like the chief. But he was, he was a great man, so we're gonna adjourn in his memory and also the memory of Dennis Hansberger, our third district supervisor who served from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty and then nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and eight. He passed away on May sixth, so.
And his wife was a former councilman for several years.
Yes.
And former mayor.
Oh, I didn't remember that.
Okay, so we will move in next to the Housing Authority. City manager, Mr. City Manager, any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Reports from the public? Not seeing anybody jump up on Zoom, we will move along. We have consent calendar.
Move it.
Okay, first and a second, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on that?
Hi. Hi.
Councilman Rixby.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley. Mayor Duper. Passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. Now, now that it's passed, University Homes Incorporated, do we still have anything to do with them? I, I thought that was all university property.
That is the Housing Authority, one of the.
Oh, it's, we're not talking university mobile homes.
No, they're the homeowners association for the, the condos on Prospect.
Okay. Thank you.
And there are reports of council members, reports of officers, seeing none, that will close the Housing Authority. Let's move on to the successor agency agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. First.
Second.
First and the second. Madam Clerk, one final time. Sorry.
Councilman, no problem, Councilman Gendal.
Hi.
Councilman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilman Rixby.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tempore Daley.
Yes.
Mayor Duper.
Yes.
Every time.
Thank you, it passes unanimously.
You're consistent.
Thank you for.
I think she liked it better when you were mayor pro temp, it was easier.
Every time, she made it every time, she's gonna get it though, I have faith.
I, I will.
Well, this was a, another successful second Zoom council meeting, I'm not sure if this one was better than the first one, but thank you all for participating, thank you to the IT guys for putting this all together, I know it's a, a lot of work to do this. They came in and set up laptops everywhere and got us all squared away. Appears and fellow council members. And we'll do it for tonight.
Not at all.